Okay, thank you. And Chris, thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate you being here.
Thank Bridget.
Bridget, I like your background. It looks like you're in a studio.
Yeah, yeah, I'm above my garage right now because, you know, my children are in the house. So it's the only place I can go where there's a little bit of quiet.
Yeah.
I have a lot full of dogs.
Oh, that's nice and cozy. So is Chris Getz here then for the invocation?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm present.
Ah, great, thank you. Alright, then I'll go ahead and call the Garnet Kansas City Commission meeting for November 10th to order. If you'll please say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now welcome Chris Getz with the First Christian Church Desafianification.
Thank you, guys. Will you take just a moment by with me? Heavenly Father, we just come before you and we thank you. We thank you for the many blessings that you've put around us here in this community. And I thank you for the leadership of this community. I do pray, Lord, that you would help them to have a productive meeting tonight, that it would be one of great guidance and encouragement, and that ultimately, Lord, your will would be done in this place, and that it would benefit many people who live here and who are blessed by the community. Just thank you for loving us. We thank you for dying on the cross on our behalf. And we just praise you, Lord, for the love you have for us. Just pray your blessing over our meeting tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Chris. Alright, well, we'll go ahead and move on to item two. Now, Chris, this is consent agenda, but I only see approval for one minute. Is it just the minutes for October 27th, or is there something I'm missing here?
No, yes, ma'am. That's the only thing on it.
Okay, alright, great. So Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Gwen?
I did not.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the October 27th City Commission meeting minutes. Are you a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Alright, item three, recognition of employee of the month for October is James Howard. He was the water plant operator. He has the water plant operator. He's been training with our water plant foreman, Brian Dykes, to be able to take over for him whenever Brian leaves. James has exhibited quick, capable learning from Brian and has proven his ability to keep the water plant running seamlessly when Brian isn't there. He is also putting in significant effort into becoming a certified Class III Kansas water operator. Now, this says for October. Is that correct, or is it actually for November?
So it's for work completed over the month of?
October? Okay, okay.
Recognizing his service during that month.
You're right. Okay, great. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Howard, for all the work that you've done for the city.
Thank you, James. And I appreciate the effort you're putting out to get your, what, Class III license. So that's, that's great to hear.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item four, citizens to be heard. Is there anyone who has anything that they would like to say? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item five, governing body comments. Student representative Nathan Gwen, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Gwen?
Well, first off, I'd like to congratulate Cody Geltler for winning the election. Look forward to having him aboard. And I think he's probably the youngest city commissioner we've had by far, I'm guessing, for, in the history of Garnet. It would be my guess. But I'd like to welcome him aboard.
Thank you.
Good deal. Secondly, just a statement, I'd like to let everybody know that we got our first batch of trout put in the South Lake. So for you trout fishermen, I guess they're in there. We got a bill for it anyway. After that, Chris, do you know COVID numbers? They don't, they don't let us know. So does anybody know any current COVID numbers right now?
So as of yesterday was last numbers I saw that were updated, I believe we were at 63 active in the community. Verify that real quick, but they don't release every day. But that was about where we were at last week, too. So we're staying fairly stable with those numbers. But I guess they just released an update two hours ago. We are at 57 now. So we've came down by a few cases since yesterday. The case is just rolling, completing their quarantine period, I'm guessing. But we're still, you know, that's 57 cases. For the longest time, we were under 20. I know here, as obviously we're on Zoom today, one of the biggest challenges we've had as a community here recently, just school decided to go virtual learning for a couple of weeks now is a challenge. But hopefully, we can get those numbers continuing on this downward trend.
Okay, and that, so that 57 for the county would equate to a little over a half of, one half of 1%, just to put it in some kind of context. Went out and seen the airport fueling apron. It looks like it's well underway. And I thought later this week, they were going to complete the pour, the way I understood. So it looked like about half of it was there, and they got about half of it to pour yet. Out there. I just was looking in your report, Chris. I, I'm glad to see we're making some progress on proceeding with the transfer station, or looking into the costs and all different things. So I appreciate you guys doing that. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gwen. Commissioner Cole?
I would like to thank Beau Harris for fixing the downtown speaker. I know that everybody's been wanting to get that up and going. So I appreciate his time for that.
Okay, was there anything else, Commissioner Cole? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Brian Dykes for his years of service as the water plant operator. We appreciate him. I know he's working until the end of the year, but it seems like December comes and goes. And I didn't want him to take off and not know how much we appreciated him. I also will put in another plug for anybody out there that's going to do any holiday shopping to shop local. And I would like to welcome Cody Geltler as well. So that's it.
Okay, great. Alright, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the street sweepers that are out there cleaning up the streets. There are a lot of fall leaves out on the roads right now, and it's nice to see them being cleaned up very quickly. I also would just want to make mention for my fellow commissioners that we're trying to schedule at least as well as we can, some city code meetings. So maybe we can work through it and get it taken care of. So you can start off the year with hopefully revised code to work with. So if you have any time to be able to respond to that doodle poll, then I would really appreciate it. And we'll go ahead and move on to regular business. So consideration, item A, consideration of resolution 2020-9, affirming support for Garnet's Community Heart and Soul Community Visioning Project. Now, Chris, I just want to make sure, because I had heard that there were concerns raised about whether or not it commits us financially. Is there anything from Attorney Solander's side about whether or not that would commit any financial obligation?
So I spoke with City Attorney Solander just briefly, and he indicated he didn't have any concerns regarding the resolution in terms of committing us toward any kind of financial obligations, or, you know, branding of the city, that there weren't any real concerns regarding that the city was going to be obligated to provide any kind of support with regard to those measures. But it's purely affirming verbally the support of the commission for this, this process.
Okay, and that, and that was the impression that I had as well, but just wanted to make sure that those concerns had been addressed. So, alright, then I'll go ahead and read resolution 2020-9, affirming support for Garnet's Community Heart and Soul Community Visioning Project. Whereas the city of Garnet, while a desirable place to live with a long history of welcoming all-season opportunity for an even stronger future for its culture, economy, and residents through participation in a community heart and soul project. Whereas community heart and soul is a community-wide effort to understand what matters most to all residents of the city. Whereas the three guiding principles of community heart and soul mirror the desires of city leadership when considering future plans. Involve everyone, focus on what matters, play the long game. Whereas the community heart and soul program provides an effective template for use in community planning that encompasses a broad cross-section of community participation. Whereas community heart and soul have been successfully used in other communities to distill what matters most to residents into heart and soul statements that provide the guidance for future plans, decisions, and actions affecting the Garnet community. Whereas while the city of Garnet is preparing to develop a strategic plan update, its comprehensive plan and update to the city zoning code, city leaders value involvement from a broad cross-section of residents that will result in a better alignment of the city's plans with the aspirations of the members of the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Garnet, Kansas, that this resolution has been assembled for the Garnet City Commission to approve and agree to participate in the community heart and soul program as outlined by the Orton Family Foundation with the assistance of heart and soul coach, Michelle Frank. Further resolved that the Garnet City Commission supports the volunteer growing Garnet Community Heart and Soul Leadership Team to act as project coordinators. So are we going to go ahead and vote on this resolution then, and consider it adopted? Is that, Chris?
Assuming that's what the question might be.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-9. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Vote has been adopted by the governing body as of the 10th day of November 2020. Alright. So we'll go ahead and move on to item B, consideration of annual Christmas bonuses. Now, Chris, I was under the impression whenever we were budgeting last, last year, that we had budgeted dollars towards this. Is that correct?
Yes. I'm sorry.
The following year.
So this past, if you may recall, this was an issue for a few years where you were trying to determine how many resources you wanted to put into, to these Christmas bonuses. It's historic within $200. There's conversation about increasing that to 250. Then there was conversation about at 225, whether we make them chamber bucks instead of cash. And it wound up being that, I believe, we budgeted 200 in this year's budget. And that's what we were looking at for the same for, for next year's budget, too. It didn't really get brought up in next year's budget process conversation. I think we were focused on, on COVID and impacts of, you know, how everything's going to impact our budget with regard to that. But the, the resources this year are certainly there. If you would like to modify it a little bit, you know, we've done a good job of trying to keep finances under, we've restricted purchasing as much as, you know, possible this year, given that we, especially over the summer months, didn't know where we were going to wind up at the end of the year with regard to pandemic and everything. And so we have a little bit of resources here at the end of the year. You know, we're looking at buying some things certain that we need, and that we put off just not knowing how the, how things are going to play out. But, you know, however you would like to proceed with regard to bonuses is up in the air for what you would like to do.
I, I for one would, I think it's been 200 for several years. I'd like to see it go to 225 is just my, my opinion.
I agree. I, I think I've brought it up the last two years in a row. I would like to see us increase the Christmas bonuses. I'm fine with the 225. I would be fine with the 250.
Okay, so Greg, do I have a motion from you?
Well, I would make a motion to increase the Christmas bonuses for the employees from 200 to $225.
Okay, I'll second. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we will go ahead and move on to item C, approval of semi-monthly bills into payroll and the amount of $286,077.44. Now, I was reading on the, on the report that a lot of that has to do with a lot of expenses that came up this month, whether it be for the Reclamite project, or what else was there? Oh, yeah, the fiber optic grant to Quikcom, then pieces of equipment at the recreation center and some laptops. So that was the explanation that was given for the higher dollar amount for this billing cycle. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I, I got mine answered earlier.
Okay, Commissioner Gwen?
I got mine answered also.
Alright, great. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the $286,077.44 for the semi-monthly bills and payroll. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright, so moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Informational items, deep written internal reports. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions or comments?
I had a couple of comments. Travis, you are taking advantage of those webinars. Good for you. I know I said that last time, but I was excited to hear that you felt like they were really, they were really good. They were worth the time because sometimes free doesn't always mean great. So.
Yes, information overload right now. I've, I've been in, I started the Clerks Conference this week. I've got one every morning at eight and one at one. And in between that, I've got assignments on blackboard. I haven't used blackboard since I was in college. So that was kind of a reminiscing memory. But yeah, it's, it's very, it's overwhelming, but it's good. So getting, getting quite a bit out of it. So it's good.
Yeah, I was also excited to see that you were in it. Is it a three-year program? For the certified municipal clerk? Do you, is that like a three-year program?
It's four. That's what I started, that's what I started Monday.
Okay.
It's a week-long conference, and it's one week every year. And so in order to get your certification to be a certified clerk, you have to go through all four years.
Yeah, that's probably pretty intensive.
I think it's 120 or 140 hours total of work. They usually do them in person in Wichita, but with COVID, they've done it all virtual this year. So, so yeah, it's been, it's been pretty neat. I was trying to do some of it this afternoon, and the blackboard was down. So hopefully, I can catch up. I've got, I actually have a, I have two of them tomorrow. And they're like, sorry, it's a holiday, but you still got to do it. So, so I'll be working mostly tomorrow, too. So.
Well, good deal. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Gwen?
I just had a couple of things I'd like to, on the airport report, looks like they got a lot of good things going out there. And it's good to see. And it sounds like there's some people getting some interest in maybe some hanging, bringing some other planes out there. So that would increase the traffic and volume, which is a good thing. The other thing, the public works report was, was excellent. It was very descriptive and appreciated that. Looking through the police, police report, I wondered if the, I see there seemed to me like there was a lot of alcohol and drug-related stops, or that was the result of this stops at the end. And I just, I just wonder if that's a kind of a COVID-related thing, if there's an uptick in, in that sort of thing. I don't know. I just, just seen that and wondered that, I guess. And I think that is all that I have.
Okay. Um, Chris, did you have any answer or response to his question that you could provide?
I, I don't, in terms of, you know, whether it's really relative to COVID or not. You know, I think trend-wise, that is the case, then we'll probably see that, that trend continuing here over the winter months, which certainly is not a good trend. But hopefully, that's a fluke. But I think the time will tell if that's due to more people struggling, whether it be with quarantine, or whether it be with the ramifications of the pandemic and what we're going through as a, as a society right now.
Thank you so much. First off, I will echo what.
I didn't detect in reading it, but it really was likely due to anything except just basic degeneration of people's attitude about alcohol and.
Could you hear, City Attorney Solander there?
I couldn't.
Okay, can you unmute yourself on that?
I did. Yeah. There it went. Alright. No, I was just saying that I don't think there is any way you could deduce that it either was or was not related to COVID or anything else. It just seemed to me that it was largely indicative of a continued degeneration of people's mores and ideals about alcohol and drugs. I just, I don't know, and I don't think anybody does, but a lot of the, a lot of the folks who were the perpetrators or the alleged perpetrators, I doubt were that directly impacted by the virus or the shutdown. Now, you can have isolated instances, but just as a whole, I would be somewhat reluctant to say that that's why we had that up to. I don't know why we did, but it's been my observation over many years of doing this, that things seem to go in cycles. I've never figured out why, but they do.
Thank you so much for providing that clarification. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Gwen was saying about the Public Works Department. I had written on my paper, loved the information because it was very detailed and very good. The other thing that I just wanted to point out was to say thank you to all of the people who made it possible, in particular, Anderson County Cards, Rosie and Darren Ellis, who helped with Anderson County Cards to provide the Halloween hoopla. It sounded like it was wonderful. I know a lot of families had a lot of fun there. So thank you for all of the work that was done there. Also wanted to thank the Parks and Rec Department for being able to provide a small sense of normalcy with their soccer season. I think it was soccer and football this fall. It was nice to see that they were able to do that before the increased number of cases and before it was canceled. So it was wonderful to see that normalcy. And I think that is all I have. So we'll go ahead and move on to October 2020 financials. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Gwen, did you have any questions?
I did not.
Alright, and I didn't either. So we'll go ahead and move on to the city manager's report. Chris, did you have anything that you wanted to elaborate on before we get to questions about it?
In terms of my report, not really. Other things I'll mention real quick, but is there any questions on my report first?
Okay, Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions about the report. I didn't know if there was any updates on water treatment plant, the highway project, any of those things that you might want to update us on. But I don't have any questions on your report.
Yeah, so the water, just had a conversation with our water plant engineer, Jordan, and we're still, in terms of the, the land conversion, still waiting to unfortunately hear back from the private property owner on that. They're still going through the appraisal process. But our water plant engineer is working with Andrew, I believe that's Andrew, our Director of Public Works, on the call with us. So if there's anything he wants to add, feel free, Andrew. But they've been working hand in hand to try to make sure that in terms of everything with the new plant is going to go, go off about a hitch, it'll be seamless once the new plant is built. The, they're going through a process right now, as I mentioned at the last meeting, of increasing the water pressure in our system to make sure that the water lines in town can handle the pressure that the new plant is going to push out, or is capable of pushing out in the event that we need to produce as much as it, as it possibly can. And we kind of hit a brief snag last week, I believe it was Thursday, that we, we had three leaks occur at once. And so they kind of held there and then backed off a little bit. So we didn't have significant leaks over the weekend. But they're going to be slowly ramping those, that VFD back up to see if we can gain just a little bit more pressure. We're close in terms of where our water pressure is going to reside at with the new plant. So hopefully, we can get there and stabilize. And we're not going to have major distribution system concerns to worry about is the goal. But we're still in the process of figuring that out. With regard to the, what was the, what was the second part of that question?
The highway project.
Highway project. So engineering is, is continuing on that. I anticipate, hopefully by the end of the month, to have set up preliminary design for the highway project. And we also, hopefully by the end of the month, will have a set of 60% design plans for the water plant. So both are proceeding and looking forward to having both of those start here before too awful long. I anticipate going to bid with regard to the water plant, hopefully next spring, probably late spring. And with regard to the highway project, it's probably somewhere, you know, midsummer is where I expect to go to bid with that. It's a fiscal year 21 project for the state, or sorry, 22 project for the state, which will start October 1 of 21 and go to September 30 of 22. So it'll probably actually occur the summer of 22 when the highway project starts. But we'll probably go to bid next, next summer would be my guess on that one. But both are continuing with design work. And I would like to thank Andrew for really coming in and hitting the ground running with regard to the water plant especially. That's something that, a lot of that technical jargon is, is above my head with regard to what they need and, you know, what's going to work the best for them. And so having somebody who speaks that language is certainly valuable and making sure that we're going to have the, the best water plant possible for our, for our community. So appreciate him hitting the ground running with that.
Okay, the only other thing I wanted to say is I'm looking forward to what the dollar amount might be for a possible transfer station that we, that we would have on the city side. So I think that's it.
So with regard to the transfer station, we went and Andrew and I went up on Thursday last week, I believe, and toured the facility in Lawrence for hands companies. And they addressed my report. And I thought it was a fantastic facility, but I don't necessarily think that that's probably going to be what we need. And, you know, so we're looking at, you know, even partnering with them probably isn't a very feasible scenario for us. We're still looking at ways we can, we can do some things. They had a pretty interesting setup. And I think there are pieces of that we might be able to utilize for our own purposes. But even in the meantime, Andrew is trying to find ways to more immediately cut some costs, as well as, you know, if this doesn't pan out, some ways that we might be able to try to cut some costs long-term with regard to, you know, we're looking at, and I appreciate Commissioner Gwen for, for bringing it up, but the Coffee County landfill is actually a little bit cheaper than the Allen County landfill even. And so Andrew, I believe yesterday and today, has worked on getting us the ability to dump over there. It's about the same distance. It's about the same distance as is Allen County, um, and it's a little bit cheaper. And if we can do so on some of our lighter days when we have more time, uh, that should save us some money. It won't be, you know, we're we're crunching the numbers with regard to, you know, increased fuel costs, increased labor costs, increased wear and tear on the trucks, et cetera. And overall, uh, with regard to the cost savings, we should see by hauling it a further distance. It should still save us money hauling it a further distance than, uh, paying the the higher dump costs here, even with increased wear and tear on the trucks, et cetera. So, um, that's at least something we're, um, we're more actively doing and Andrew's looking at a few other options. Uh, he's gonna be, uh, he's putting together some proposals on, uh, some various other solutions to the, for the trash utility. And so we're gonna be looking at those over the next, so, and hopefully have some, some good possible options here moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good deal.
Commissioner Gwen, did you have any questions or comments?
I did not.
All right, and we'll go ahead and move on to our second citizens-to-be-heard section. Is there anyone who would like to say anything?
I I'd like to say a couple of remarks. This is Cody. Um, I just want to thank you guys. Um, I look forward to working with all of you starting in January. Uh, especially thank you to Mayor Brett Heisenhuss for serving on the commission and all of your time and due diligence that you've put into this position. Um, I know you have a beautiful family and, uh, I I really appreciate your time. Uh, and, um, especially thank you to Chris and all the other employees that have answered my questions and inquiries over the past few months to help me prepare for this position. So I'm looking forward to January and looking forward to the future of Garnet, so thank you all.
Thank you for your comments, Cody.
Thank you.
I think you'll, I think you'll find this is a very exciting adventure.
Nah, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, one other thing I had, um, I don't know if anybody has a question to this, but is there any Veterans Day ceremonies that, uh, will be held tomorrow locally or um, does anybody know if there will be or not?
I am unfortunately not aware of any ceremonies at the moment. Um, I I know unfortunately with the, uh, with the pandemic at the moment, there's a lot of, uh, things that are unfortunately not occurring.
Right. Only one, only one I thought about is that the Sheneau is having, uh, veterans parade, I believe, or they were having some, some function in Sheneau, so it's ways away. But we want to thank veterans regardless, whether we have anything or not. They-
Absolutely.
This is why this nation is where it is, because our veterans.
Yeah, well, that's all I had. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else?
Uh, Madam Mayor, just, I'll mention a couple more things if possible. Um, I would like to just, with regard to the comments you made, uh, on the city code workshop meetings, hopefully, uh, we can have some of those. I sent out a doodle poll here a couple of days ago. I believe, uh, in the last week, if you could try to respond to that, um, and see if we can get something set up, I'd appreciate it. Uh, I believe we are getting ready to start on chapter seven, which is health and welfare. Uh, we just ended with fire. I believe we, according to my notes, I believe we completed the fire chapter. So the next chapter is health and welfare, um, mainly focusing on, uh, nuisances, code enforcement, that kind of stuff. Uh, the, in addition to that, uh, on the, on the trash topic again, just real quick, I I did get an email today, another engineering firm that I've reached out to. Um, this one, you know, whereas the firm we've been working with on trying to get some, some insights and knowledge was willing to work with us a little bit. Uh, just due to the relationship that we have and and just trying to help facilitate something and then, you know, if if we need their services, great. Um, uh, I have somebody else who submitted, uh, a proposal that they would give us a a feasibility study of what it would look like for a transfer station. Um, and the cost of that is twelve thousand nine hundred dollars for a feasibility study. So just for some perspective that, um, you know, that's, that's pretty pricey, um, to just have a, a study done of whether or not this is a good idea or not. Um, so just kind of wanted to give you an idea of of where that sits. Um, but we're still looking out, uh, looking at it and trying to figure out if there's a way that, uh, you know, we can figure out a solution ourselves and maybe still come up with something for a transfer station. Uh, I would also like to, um, thank Andrew again here for, uh, here yesterday, uh, the concrete contractor working out at the airport, as Commissioner Gwen mentioned, is doing a great job out there. Um, appreciate them doing some terrific work. They should be finishing up with the concrete here shortly. And then the asphalt milling overlay of the taxiway, um, will begin. Uh, with regard to the concrete work, uh, I met with the concrete contractor, their foreman, as well as Director Burkhart and our, uh, and our streets foreman, Mr. Wetstein, uh, yesterday, and we went around and looked at some, some areas around town that we might, um, I asked for a proposal on what it would cost at least to see if we could get some additional curb and gutter work done, whether here in town. Um, some ADA sidewalks, uh, um, uh, just a, a couple of other projects that need to be done and at least see what we might be able to get them done for. So I know the commission has, specifically, I think around that, uh, Second and and Elm, I believe it is, or or Second Walnut right there around the First Christian Church. Um, we're looking at trying to see if we can get some ADA sidewalks there, um, and potentially another area or two, uh, intersection or two, and so uh, looking at at least what the cost might be with this contractor and seeing if there's a way to make it happen. So uh, wanted to just mention that that might be a possibility. I'm gonna be meeting with with Bettis, uh, because they're gonna be doing the milling overlay on the taxiway, uh, next week and trying to have set the same conversation with them, uh, with regard to some other areas around town that need some asphalt work, such as there in front of the, um, in front of the funeral home on Oak Street, as well as a couple of other spots. So, uh, just trying to get some work done uh, here before the end of the year, if, uh, we can get it done at a good price and, uh, and weather holds out. So that's what we're looking for at least. Uh, and I also, on behalf of the, of city staff, do, would like to thank you for the increase on the Christmas bonuses and and giving Christmas bonuses at all. And that's something certainly that, that the city doesn't have to do and the commission, uh, you know, isn't obligated to do by any means, and so everybody certainly appreciates that and, uh, would like to thank you for that. And also, congratulations to Commissioner Getler and, uh, I look forward to working with you and and, uh, certainly to Commander Burkhart and Huss for, um, working with people the past three years. I think you've done a phenomenal job and look forward to the next month or so. I'm still getting to work with you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you're concrete guys and I, I realize this wouldn't be anything in the scope we could do right now, but while they're here and get a bid out of them or some insight from them on the North Lake spillway. Uh, that's a concrete structure that's massively damaged that, uh, it might be worth getting a bid from them anyway.
And so on the North Lake spillway as well as the Cedar Valley Reservoir spillway, um, we have been working with that, Travis extensively, uh, with FEMA on trying to get some mitigation assistance, uh, in both of those areas. We believe that we're going to receive some assistance. It's a significant challenge working with FEMA to actually move that needle and and get there, but, um, you know, both projects are over a quarter million dollars apiece. Uh, I believe this, the, uh, Cedar Valley Reservoir project is over, is about a million dollars. Um, and our portion of that's gonna be about fifteen percent. Um, so, you know, even just that alone is a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but uh, if we don't do it, uh, there's a good chance that, like what we saw last year, happens again here in the next few years. Um, and then we're gonna shell out, you know, you may recall last year, we spent thirty thousand dollars. Um, over the next twenty years, if we spend thirty thousand dollars multiple times, we'd have been money ahead probably to go ahead and take FEMA's money and get the repair done for a hundred and fifty and have it work for the next hundred years. Um, so we're, we're working with FEMA and seeing if, um, if that might be feasible. Uh, we're trying to have them assist us with regard to having their engineers give us some, some insight. Uh, because normally what they like to do is to have us design it and hire engineer and spend a bunch of money. Um, and if we can have their engineers tell us exactly what they want, and we're running into that with regard to the bridge that we repaired last year. Um, they said, yes, an emergency fix, go ahead and do it. And now that we've done it, they're telling us, well, you didn't do it the way we wanted it done. So you gotta do this now. And so we're looking at, okay, well, I'm gonna have to have a head wall built and and wing walls built and have it done differently, um, than it is right now, but we'll still be money ahead, um, doing it and only paying fifteen percent of the total project um, compared to paying what we have right now, because we've spent over seventy thousand on it right now. And so, you know, it'll, it'll definitely work out in our favor, uh, but FEMA is just a challenge to work with and and so I'm hoping that with regard to the North Lake spillway specifically, uh, we can have some some progress on that here in the next, oh, year or so with regard to at least some preliminary, uh, motions, getting, uh, the ball rolling. We had engineering firm give us a ballpark estimate on what it would cost to fix that, and a-again, it was like a quarter million dollars. Um, so I don't, that's a significant challenge with regard to trying to get equipment down there and, uh, that's that, that's a pretty significant project, but, uh, you know, we, we just have to make sure that now, once we get it fixed, similar to the, to the bridge we just got replaced last year, um, you know, we just need to make sure we're maintaining things and moving forward. Uh, I believe I mentioned in my report as well that I have went ahead and had, told Bob Salazar uh, to to move forward with regard to, uh, repairing the, the bridge around Mule Shoe, because I'm concerned about it doing the same thing that our other bridge did, um, on the south side, and certainly I'd rather pay, you know, around three thousand to fix a bridge than pay seventy thousand to replace it. Um, and didn't that not be good enough? So we'll end up paying probably eighty to eighty-five, um, to do it, you know, the way at least FEMA would want us to, so. I, I think if we can get in the mode of, you know, just spending some money on maintenance every year, we'll be, we'll be, uh, well ahead.
Chris, I saw that there is a question posed as to whether our streets crew ever does any of the curb and gutter repair work, or if that's typically contracted out?
We do, uh, typically contract it out if it is a bigger job. Our staff and our crew does have the ability to do it. Uh, but with regard to larger jobs, uh, long stretches of curb and gutter or um, significant amount of sidewalk, uh, we don't have a, uh, we don't have the permanent forms. We don't have a lot of the, uh, the ability or the, the training, the experience to do, uh, you know, in large swaths, and so we do, you know, small batches here and there, and it's not very efficient. Uh, and so, you know, typically, if it's a bigger job, we'll contract that out. I would like to get to where we're doing more of that work in-house, uh, to where we're doing more of it ourselves. You know, as you may recall here, a few years ago, we talked about buying all of the equipment, um, again, to do streets ourselves. Uh, because the city used to do that, and then, for whatever reason, the city sold off all of our equipment um, and decided that we didn't want to be in that ballgame any longer and we'll just contract everything out. I would much prefer to be able to do everything in-house, uh, but that comes with challenges with regard to the upfront capital cost of the equipment. Um, if you don't do it enough, your staff loses the, the expertise and they don't do as good of a job, uh, et cetera. So, you know, that's the reason why the county is not doing, um, doesn't use their paper. They have a expensive asphalt lay-down machine that is just sitting. They don't use because they claim that, well, they don't do as good of a job as the contractors do because they don't lay enough asphalt every year. And so they're trying to sell this lay-down machine because their personnel aren't as as good as, as using it to where they get competent enough that they do it enough every year that they're gonna be in that ballgame. And, you know, so it's just, are we gonna ever do enough of that work, have a big enough crew to be able to dedicate people to do that work, so on and so forth, to be able to effectively and efficiently do that work ourselves? But, um, I'm sorry, that's kind of a, a round answer there, but we we do do some of it ourselves, but at the moment, we contract most of it out.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. Uh, do any of the citizens have anything else that they would like to say before we adjourn? Okay, seeing none, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, the movement seconded all in favor, say aye. Aye? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for all of your participation. It was kind of fun to see the comments come across. I had never seen that before, so that was kind of exciting.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.